Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council. We are glad you're here, and we have a number of exciting things for you this evening. But first, I'd like to start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading centers for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. We would like to take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization. May we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so with one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Tonight, we are honored to have the Girl Scouts here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you young ladies please come on up? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Who's my leader? I'd like you to come up and stand by me.
I know girls in the line, as best you can.
Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we give a round of applause? Don't go anywhere. Have you got our photo? Did you get your photo?
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll do a photo.
Stay right there, let me stand up here. I'll get out of here.
No, no, you're fine.
You guys are good. All right, thank you, City Council. That was Halloway.
Dallas?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, girls. I keep doing the record, I want to have something to say.
Oh, I always do. We love Spokane, and we love Spokane City Council. When you exit tonight, you'll see the clock tower is green. It's honoring our 113th birthday, which is this Wednesday. You're just such an amazing city. You really are. Thank you for leading us, City Council. Since we've been here last year, our girls sold 1.2 million cookies. They're aiming to sell 1.3 million this year. But for my audience and to everyone out there, here's the best news of all. This Girl Scouts haven't raised cookie prices since 2016. And it's 75% of our funding, and that's because we've grown. And that's because this community and all Eastern Washington, Northern Idaho, have supported us. One last vignette. I know you have some great dancers coming here and others, so I'll get off the stage. But one last note here is I know you love your troops overseas. Just a month ago, we delivered over 150 boxes to troops in the middle of Iraq, 120-person detachment out there as well. So someone bought cookies last year, 39,000 in total. And one of the Girl Scouts there, Rayanne, Rayanne, raise your hand. She's one of my lead chargers out there for troop-to-troupe cookies there. She's over 100 right now. So she's making a difference for troops all over the world. So I just want to say, these are your future business leaders. These are the girls who are going to be sitting up there someday. I thank you, City Council, for honoring these girls, for letting us know we're a council where girls grow strong. And this Wednesday, we're 113 years, and we're going to keep going and going and going because we need girls who can do anything. Thank you, City Council, for all you do.
Thank you.
Point of personal privilege, if I could. It's an honor for me to work with the Girl Scouts, but it is our 113th birthday. But it's actually Brian's birthday as well, so I want to say happy birthday to Brian.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brian. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Also a point of personal privilege, Councilmember Bingle and myself had the opportunity to attend your fundraising event last Saturday night, which was amazing. I ate a lot of sugar. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll, please?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Great. And tonight, we have poetry at the podium by Brandon Sullivan. Come on down, Brandon.
Hi, my name is, is this good? My name is Brandon. I live in Spokane Valley, and this poem is called "Lilac Cracks." In a Safeway parking lot at 11:37 PM, I spy a car with no windshield, the barrier between driver and potential speeding bullet bugs absent, the rusted paint and vague suggestion of green or brown, the logical compliment to this odd evening sight. I wonder if the lack of windshield allowed me to peer into some part of Spokane that night. But I moved a lot as a child, so I've never been able to color in a city with memory, always had a hard time understanding that fundamental principle that turns municipality into identity, though I'm sure it's got to be more than landmarks. Could it be the two dogs perched in a grocery outlet shopping cart, rattling down the street three miles from the nearest grocery outlet, to the tune surely present in the aged skull that belonged to the man pushing it, raggedy and homeless, and at the very least happy his two best friends were small enough to fit in this ramshackle vehicle, alongside sleeping bags and plastic bags and recollections, past the poetry that hangs from Main Avenue street lamps on a cold winter night when the wind carries knives of ice that carve their way across skin? There is more than one skeleton driving a motorcycle in this city, hanging from the ceiling at a hole-in-the-wall burrito joint or beside lawn gnomes in at least one yard. But you also might spot the odd 15-foot-tall specimen standing guard over brown grass choked with weeds, fence bent as if caved in by the footstep of some attacking giant who halted when he saw the skeletal, eyeless, off-season Halloween grin. There may not be life, but there is history in those ocular cavities who have seen the sprawling suburbs sprout equal parts beauty and entropy, houses blossomed luxurious a century ago, now dilapidated suggestions right beside million-dollar mansions as in-between run the arteries of Freya and Thor and other Norse deities, on which I float and pass a rusted-out shell of a Volkswagen bug emptied of itself to welcome the sunset of flowers sprouting from its depths, a bush full to bursting, able to be what it wants with no windows nor windshield to keep it at bay. I think of the river that cuts through Spokane Center like a scar that only breathes water. I think of my life in this city, the myths bleeding beneath our feet, the skeletons in our skin, the insides of houses and cars, as if the city itself is eager to expose its innards, whether by blood or bones or poems that fling themselves out of dark caverns like spontaneously erupting wildflowers. I found healing in Spokane. I hope I can return the favor. Thank you.
Next, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, we will have a proclamation written by Councilmember Dillon.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. It's an honor to share this proclamation. Whereas, once again, it's time to celebrate St. Patrick's Day and all that it means to the sons and daughters of the Old Sun and those that are Irish for our day. And whereas, the city of Limerick, Ireland, has been a sister city to Spokane since 1990, forming a strong bond and friendship between our two cities. And whereas, it is also a time to celebrate our diversity and the richness of the Irish culture that blends with all other ethnic cultures to enhance the fabric of our community, to make Spokane a place where we all belong. Whereas, this year, the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick will host the 45th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 15, 2025, which is a harbinger of our spring and one of the largest Irish events on the West Coast. Whereas, let us look to the Gaelic phrase, "Ní ní art, go gur lehea." There is no strength without unity, words that emphasize the importance of working together and have been cherished in Ireland since the first lines were carved on Oum stones. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, do hereby proclaim March 10 through 17, 2025, as the Week of the Irish in Spokane and urge all residents to join with me in celebrating the grand St. Patrick's Day events taking place in our community this week. Happy day. Delivered this to you, Keats.
Keats?
Don't be shy. That's Irish, aren't we, for being shy?
No. You did that Gaelic very well, by the way.
Yes.
You know, raise the president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ray Hamilton. I'm the president of the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank our mayor and also our council members for this prestigious time today. And we will be taking the streets Saturday. I would like to say the parade starts at noon, but for me, it starts about 4:30 AM. So if someone would like to come down and join me, that would be great. I appreciate everything the city does to accommodate the Irish and our culture here in this town. Thank you. And real quickly, I'd also like to recognize the Girl Scouts because they actually lead our parade. They hold and carry our banner throughout. So, look for them. Thank you again.
And did you want to introduce our dancers? Or can our dancers come on up and they can introduce themselves? Let's just get that out there right now. Girls rock.
Lemon History Month.
Yep. Yep.
We're an Irish dancer. Been in Spokane for quite a while. Started at Petal Falls, but we made our home here as well. We want to dance for you.
Five, six, seven, eight.
Thank you, young ladies, so much for that. I have to say, channeling our former councilmember Kinnear, who used to be an Irish dancer herself, this was one of her most favorite nights. So, in honor of you, Councilmember Kinnear, wherever you are. All right, moving on to our agenda tonight. Are there any public comments for Consent Agenda? We have three public comments for the Consent Agenda. That's Alex Stein, Justin Holler, and Derek Azaro. No Alex, Justin Holler?
Too bad Alex Stein couldn't have showed up. That would have been awesome. Man, I like his stuff. Have you seen him on YouTube? It's good stuff. My name's Justin. I live in District 1. This is the Consent Agenda, not the OPRs.
This is the Consent Agenda, correct.
Are we going to deal with the OPRs later?
We will.
Okay. Yeah, regarding 002, 6 million for the parks and library, for what? I've never seen a breakdown of what the 6 million is for or what the 12 million is for, of any breakdowns of any of the money that you spent. Why are parks and libraries lumped together? And why are we having beautiful libraries for homeless people to do their activities in and around? And why are we having beautiful parks for drug addicts to use drugs in and urinate and defecate upon the parks? And then you have roaming gangs attacking people next to the park. I don't see what the money is spent on and why we're not spending it on security instead. I'd like to see that money, maybe be like Elon Musk, go line through line and look at each little thing and go, you know what? That's not necessary. That's not necessary. But you guys won't do that because there's no accountability for the money you spend. And it's our money. We pay taxes, exorbitant amount of taxes, that you keep raising, and then all of a sudden, poof, it's gone. And then you steal money from one pot of money that's supposed to be for this, and you send it to another area, and you've done that time and time again. The money that you take from one pot should stay in that pot. But you guys won't do that. It's sketchy.
Please, no public comment. It is not allowed, or you'll be asked to leave. Thank you, Justin. Derek Azaro?
Derek Azaro, formerly Logan District. Just make a comment on number 11, the money for the elementary school sidewalks. Every school around this town needs sidewalks, for sure. The ink's not even dry on last week when you guys approved the money for the sidewalk in Marietta. I can tell you, this last week, all of a sudden, that street is now full of homeless motorhomes. Neighbors are calling, no answer, no police, no nothing. I had a conversation with the Yashahura principal today. Went there to tell her, you know, the exciting news of getting the sidewalk. By the time, she said, can you help me with some other problem? I go, what's that? It was those homeless trailers that are, all the motorhomes. All the children, Yashahura, a lot of them are going to her and complaining that now they're scared to walk down the street to go down to the school. So my sidewalks are going in, but now the kids are afraid to walk down the street because nobody's going to come and deal with the motorhomes that are there. These people are active ignite, going back and forth between the trailers, or motorhomes, excuse me, and nobody's doing anything at all. And we have a mayor that just refuses to cooperate. That's a school. That's 1,000 feet of a school. That's a law that's supposed to be there, and this mayor's not going to enforce that. So I want her to go to that school and tell those kids they don't have to be scared to walk down the street because she's too scared to take care of the business that she's supposed to take care of. So here we got this money coming down. I worked four years to get, appreciate all you guys voting on that. Like I said, the ink's not even dry. And I hear that story this morning. And I heard about my neighbors calling me and telling me, you know, there's motorhomes up and down the street. So now those kids can't walk down that street. Then here we got a city that has all this money that's being allocated out, but you won't spend one dime on code enforcement or one dime on the PD or one dime on supporting Prop 1, but you waste money everywhere else. So I think somebody owes those kids an apology for the fact they can't walk to school safely anymore. Thank you.
Any council commentary on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, prepare to vote. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions, the Consent Agenda is passed. Ms. Fister?
Resolution 2025-0006 regarding an update to Appendix A of the public rule for the City of Spokane Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility and Industrial Pretreatment Program and Lab Analysis Fees.
Alex Stein, if you're online, can you hit star 3?
Alex Stein is not with us. Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was an aye for Councilmember Navarette, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-15 acknowledging the completion of the land capacity analysis for the City of Spokane, a required part of Plan Spokane, the 2026 Periodic Update of the City of Spokane Conference of Plan, analyzing the capacity of the existing city boundaries to accommodate additional people and housing units expected in the city between 2023 and 2046.
We have several public comment. Cherry Hill? Are you online, Cherry? Isaiah Payne? Is Isaiah Payne in the house or online? Justin Holler?
Sorry, which one is this again?
We are speaking about the land capacity analysis.
Yeah, the survey?
The land capacity analysis, yes.
0731?
No, 0015.
0015. Oh, okay, 0015. Yeah, sorry, I don't have my... I thought you were going to suspend the rules on that and not talk about it, actually. So that's what I had on my notes, that you were suspending the rules. And if we're suspending the rules, why can't we clap and boo and cheer? So that's why I have my notes, that you were going to suspend the rules and not talk about that. You're talking about that now?
We're talking about the completion of the land capacity analysis, Justin.
So why is it on the website? You're not talking about, and you're suspending the rules, and then you're talking about it?
Yes.
Yeah, I had proposed an amendment, and it was too late to do it under our existing rules. And so that's why the reference to suspending the rules. We ultimately did not do that. That would have been at the 3:30.
How much money is this regarding?
No money.
No money, it's a study.
Okay, just kidding. Well, but, never mind then.
Thank you. Isaiah Payne? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Isaiah, you're unmuted.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you for a moment to address this issue. So this is something that Spokane Home Builders has been actively engaged in, and, you know, we care a lot about the ability to have land available for building, for creating homeownership opportunities for our community. And with this particular item, with the land capacity analysis, we've identified and communicated a number of flaws to what's been placed in front of you. You know, we'd like to provide additional analysis. There's still data that hasn't been made public, that hasn't been shared, that has impeded our efforts to provide the necessary data and information to this body. You know, there have been challenges in the past based on infrastructure gap analysis and making sure that we have an accurate picture of what land is actually reasonably available for building. And this has a significant impact. Those who are seeking to engage in investment in our community, want to build homes for our community members, our families to live in, have had a difficult time finding available land that doesn't have various geological impacts to them and that have been, in recent years, highly elevated in cost, right? And so, you know, if it were true that there were plentiful land currently available inside the urban growth boundary, it wouldn't be difficult to find land. It wouldn't be so costly to engage in these efforts and to purchase land. And yet, we see that just a simple evaluation of the marketplace shows us that it is extremely expensive, much more so than it was even just five or six years ago. And so, you know, we're concerned about some of these inaccurate assessments. You know, we have an algorithm that's put together, but we're really just not doing our homework. And that's what we'd like the time to do. All right, we'd like the time to analyze the outgrowth here.
Thank you, Isaiah, your time is up. Again, is Alex Stein on the line? I see him, all right. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, let me, I'll start by just, I want to thank, immensely thank our staff for all the hard work that they've put in on this. This is not an easy task. It's a very time-consuming and laborious task. But, you know, they've got the technical expertise, and they've been trying to do the best job that they can. And so whether it's Tiro Black or Kevin Freebot, obviously Spencer Gardner, to some degree, I just think, you know, I really want to thank the work and time that they have put into this. You know, this is obviously a very important process that will help determine the future of growth in our community. There's much, much more to it than just the City of Spokane. It's a regional effort that is, in part, dealt with by the Growth Management Steering Committee of Elected Officials, which I'm absolutely privileged and honored to have the ability to sit on and help to affect some of those issues, the countywide planning policies and the ultimate outcome of the sort of the overall comprehensive planning efforts that are taking place right now. And so, there's a lot of really important things that a lot of folks may not realize are kind of happening right now, sort of behind the scenes. It's, obviously, we welcome more of the public to participate in those GMA Steering Committee meetings. We'd love to hear more input. But I want to say on this, there's, you know, I've made some comments already as to some of my, what made me a little uneasy, wishing we were a little bit more in line. And by that, I just mean following a similar process as other jurisdictions. You know, we talked earlier today, had a big committee meeting, talking about different aspects of this. And one aspect that was brought up quite a bit was the underdeveloped and underutilized land categories. And that's something that not every jurisdiction is considering as they... And, um, and that's something that not every jurisdiction is considering as they look at this. Now, I had proposed an amendment that I had intended, kind of right up until our 3:30 meeting, to bring forward, but one thing that just came, came forward during those, that committee discussion was something that, that really just kind of put me a little bit on my heels, and, and it reminded me of just efforts that I had made prior to being on council, and how frustrating it can be to not get access to certain public records. And, um, and this is no commentary on any, any staff person or anybody else, I mean, everybody's trying to do the best they can, but, you know, there was a request for, for a lot of this detail in December. Now, it wasn't completed then, but I, I do wish that as it was completed, that all of those work product could have been shared, because I think having, um, you know, more eyes on this, being able to detail what the, the concerns might be from other third parties is beneficial to us in terms of how we make our decisions, beneficial to staff who, you know, again, doing the best they can with the information they have. And so it really kind of, a little frustrating that, you know, there wasn't the access to those records in advance. Um, I think we could have maybe gotten some really good input from folks and, and/or determined, strongly determined that perhaps the numbers that we have are exactly correct or not. And so for, for the reason, for that reason, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this. I, I would have loved to have gotten to a yes, and I think the amendment, if it would have been supported. And to be honest, I don't know if it would have been, but I, that, that would have gotten me to a yes, but prior to, um, the understanding of the public records issue. And so when I, you know, before I was on council, I couldn't tell you how many times there were policies that would come forward, and of course, you don't have all the information, and you're, you know, instead of just sharing the information, you're required to go through a public records request, and it takes sometimes 30-plus days. I mean, it just depends on how big and how overworked our, our clerk's office is, you know, God bless them for all the work that they do to get these records out. But it's really frustrating when you want to comment on something and have real good detailed analysis, and you just don't have the information until after the vote is actually taken. And so I, I told myself, as I got on council, that I would never, uh, put others in the position that previous councils had put me in. And I just feel like to vote yes on this is to sort of go against, you know, what is my absolute number one most important priority as a council member, which is transparency and access to documents and information. And so for those reasons, I'm, I'm going to vote against this, but I, I, I really do appreciate all the work that has gone in. I think there's a lot of validity to what's in here, some things I disagree with, like the underdeveloped stuff that I talked about. Uh, but overall, I just think it would have been great to have more analysis from third parties, um, and, and that could have happened, and, and still could, if, if we just gave it a little bit more time. And so for that, those reasons, I'll just be voting no tonight.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Klitsky?
I'd also like to thank staff. Um, I think that we actually did have a pretty robust, um, public process through this. We've had presentation after presentation on the methodology, both at the Planning Commission, and at the Growth Management Steering Committee, and here. But if, if we were to release the kind of data that we were asked for, it's not something you can just give to somebody in an email, you have to create an FTP site, you have to do redactions for anybody's personal information and that kind of stuff. So I think that's a little bit beyond, um, releasing our raw data from a study that was just completed. It does take time, but the methodology was solid, the work was solid, and, um, this is following our regionally adopted countywide planning policies. This isn't something that we made up ourselves, this has been something that's been agreed upon since we first started having a UGA. So this is the process that the region has agreed to, and it is the methodology that all of the jurisdictions should be using. Folks have brought up infrastructure and other issues that gets planned for in the Capital Facilities Plan. When everyone does their comprehensive plan, they also have to do a capital facilities plan to show their work of how they're going to pay for the infrastructure to support the growth they're planning for. So that will happen, this is just the very first step in the process. We've used the proper, proper methodology, and as we move forward regionally, the other jurisdictions will also need to use that methodology and make a determination about our urban growth boundary. Whatever the City of Spokane does, we're still landlocked, for the most part, around and surrounded by other jurisdictions. So if we juggle the numbers different ways, that doesn't mean we're going to be able to make the city bigger in any direction that we felt like we're right up against several other jurisdictions. So fudging the numbers or trying to make room for expansion doesn't really help the City of Spokane. So I, I don't really see any reason to belabor this anymore, and I think that we've already done good work, and I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I also want to echo the thank yous to staff and their expertise. We really do have a stellar, uh, planning and development team here at the City of Spokane, and I think one thing that's really important to remember today is that, you know, this isn't the end of the story. Some of the commentary, I, I think his thought of this analysis is maybe a little more prescriptive than it is, and, um, check out, again, the committee meeting today where we had a presentation, and, um, a couple of things that I think were just important to raise was one slide in particular that was what an LCA considers and what it does not. So, you know, possible development is under consideration, feasible development is not. Looking at our current zoning plans is under consideration, but future zoning plans are not. Um, and I think on the, uh, underutilized and underdeveloped, and I definitely hear Councilwoman Cathcart's concerns on that, but part of that is we are starting to make more progress on infill. Uh, the last couple of years, it's been slow, it's been a long, uh, battle, and I want to thank Councilwoman Cathcart for his advocacy for looking at missing middle and infill, but we are really starting to see more and more every month, you know, taking advantage of the multifamily tax exemption. Um, and then Councilwoman Klitsky nailed it on, I think, the, uh, gap analysis and some of the infrastructure issues that have been called out. Um, a lot of that is in our capital facilities plan. Latah came up a lot today, and this council, which I'm very thankful for, approved the Latah Severia Plan, um, which is working to address a lot of those, uh, needs. So, uh, I am excited to support this, and I know that there's going to be a lot of good, uh, policy recommendations and discussions that come out of this. In fact, we're already getting some of those.
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciated Kevin today, really to bring, come back around with this, um, his presentation. Couple of things that stuck out to me is like we were being asked to do a whole new filter of what was going to be, uh, the analysis going on that had not been asked or had been brought before. We had made agreement with the county that we agreed in 2024, so it wasn't that long ago, it was, these are the parameters we will work within. Also, I heard him say that this will be reevaluated in five years. So this will come back to us, so it's not like we approve this and 10 years has to go by before this work is looked at again. So with that in mind, I will be supporting this as well. And like Councilmember Dillon said, it's not the end of the story, it's just the beginning, and we will see how it goes. And we have lots more work to do, we all acknowledge that. So, and we're willing to do that work. Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, um, yeah, again, huge shout out, this is a years-long process, and Kevin, Spencer, Tyrrell, everybody in that, in that area, um, you know, has poured blood, sweat, and tears into this process, and I really respect our work, and, um, I'm, I'm personally torn on this one. Um, and the reason why I'm torn is because, um, I respect those three and, and that department so much, I think they do a lot of really great work. Um, but last Monday, which is why we ended up deferring this a week, um, you know, some people came to me and say, "Hey, we've got some issues with this," and me not being on the Steering Committee of Elected Officials, this was sort of the first time that I was hearing about the issues. And so I started diving into it a little bit, and, um, there are discrepancies between our staff and, you know, um, a, a number of folks who are doing the work to build housing. And that, to me, is where I'm torn, because I like the people who are building the housing, and I like the people who are doing this work. And there was a couple of things that were, that were brought up that I think are really, really important. And the answer to me from, you know, people in this space have been like, "Well, this isn't the time to have that conversation." And I unfortunately don't understand when the time is to have that conversation, because people much smarter than I are saying, "No, this is the time to have the conversation," and people much smarter than I are saying, "This isn't the time to have the conversation." And so a couple of things that I'm thinking about is that this council has been really good, I think, on housing policy in a lot of different ways, and, uh, it is the issue where we are the most united, and I think I'm most proud of the work that we've been doing there, um, because again, it has been a very united front in a lot of ways. But, uh, but there are questions on the land capacity analysis that I, I think were somewhat answered today, but not enough for me to, to confidently vote yes for this. So there's available land, there's, uh, underutilized land, right? There's stuff that's never going to be touched, there's all, there's all kinds of things. And, you know, we pulled some of it out based on, uh, whether or not we thought it was, it was going to be developed. But this is really, the purpose of this one is to determine what is theoretically developable, right? Now, there's a difference in theoretically developable versus reasonably developable, and this conversation is one I'm told will come up at a later time, but I, I don't know that there's a better time to have that conversation than just now. Theoretically, you could work 24 hours a day, right? Realistically, you're going to work eight hours a day, if you're a workaholic, maybe 10 or 12 hours a day, but certainly 24 hours a day is not reasonable for somebody. And I think that that's a, a thing that's lost here, because when we're looking at affordability, if, uh, our, our land that we can develop continues to be constrained, uh, with a lack of supply, will come an increase in cost. And with that increase in cost, if it's going to be developed, and people are going to be developing it, because this is how they make a, um, a living, uh, all that's going to happen is the cost of housing will go up if we continue to constrain our supply. And that worries me, because the people that I represent don't have more money for rent, don't have more money for housing, we need as affordable housing as possible. And that's not to say anybody on this council thinks we need more expensive housing, right? I mean, like I said, I, I, this council's been very good in that. But it gives me pause, because, um, this will be a document that's used when we're discussing the expansion of the urban growth area, and that's something that we need to understand as we go forward. We're talking about land that can be developed in the next 20 years, and, um, we didn't do, um, a filter for areas that are, that are lacking infrastructure. And what I hear from staff is that, you know, "Well, that's not something we should take into account, because, you know, particularly in the Latah area, we've been doing this study," and that is all true, but also the lack of infrastructure has been the reason for us to do moratoriums, uh, in the, in the city, particularly in the Latah area. And if we're going to do it there, I also have a reasonable expectation that we could do it other places. And so I think an infrastructure filter is probably something that should have been added. Um, and there, there's, there's a number of issues like that to me that, that just worry me, and when I asked staff, basically, "Okay, so you guys are very smart, right? And these people over here are also very smart. What is the disconnect?" And the answer, in some ways, was, "We don't know." And that, to me, is, is concerning, not because of lack of effort in any way, but that disconnect being what it is, is where if I'm unsure, and there's a disconnect there, I will probably defer to the people who are doing the work, and that is people who are building housing. And if they're telling me, "Jonathan, this is a bigger deal than you realize," I'm unsure, because I respect both sides so much, I'm going to defer to the people doing the work, and I appreciate them spending some time with us today and sharing their concerns. And, uh, I hope, I hope that I'm, I'm, I'm wrong in this, I hope that it's not going to have a huge impact, but I'm worried that it could have a huge impact, and for that reason, I won't be supporting.
Councilmember Klitsky?
So one thing that didn't get discussed today in either the committee or here is why we have growth containment strategies. The Growth Management Act was passed after a citizens' initiative because people in Washington realized that we were losing forests, farmland, shorelines at a rapid pace, and people were wondering, you saw places like the Moran Prairie, Rastram Prairie, um, Five Mile get paved over when it used to be farmland, and we wanted to say, like, "How far is this going to go?" So, um, the legislature put it out to the citizens, the citizens approved it, and now we have the Growth Management Act where we have a growth containment strategy. What that is, is a commitment to grow up before we grow out. And the way that that protects taxpayers is it prevents us from just expanding infrastructure, road networks, and basically urbanism, all, anywhere and everywhere, just because it's cheap. If we allowed people to just build tons of developments on cheap raw land, paving over our farmland, it would be cheap. But would it be cheap to live there? If we're expanding our footprint out further and further and further, you have to drive farther, and you have to pay for a lot more infrastructure. There's a nexus there between affordability, livability, and housing prices. So that is why we have the growth containment strategies. If we just continue to spread sewer lines, stormwater lines, power lines, and roads everywhere and anywhere, are we going to be able to service those areas with police officers, firefighters? Are we going to be able to do garbage service? Is it going to be safe? Are we going to have parks? Are we going to have schools? Are we going to have libraries? So that is why we have the Growth Management Act and these growth containment strategies. It's not just about the price of homes, it's about the price of everything altogether, holistically. And that's why we do these big comprehensive plans to consider the whole thing. And staff has determined that we have enough space for the growth number that we were given by the Office of Financial Management, and that is why we, um, are accepting this report, and that is what we will take to the Growth Management Steering Committee.
Councilmember Bingo?
And Councilwoman Klitsky is incredibly smart in this space, and so I, I'm not going to say that she's wrong in any of that, because she's, she's very good in this space. What I would say is that the thing that we're dealing with, that people on the West Side aren't dealing with, the West Side to their west is an ocean. To us, what's very close is Idaho. And if we constrain so much, what ends up happening is that people then are building a ton in North Idaho. Those are people who oftentimes are still working in the City of Spokane, right? 90,000 commuters a day on, on, um, on I-90. Those are people who are paying taxes in a separate jurisdiction, but, but are working here or own businesses here, um, or are employed by the city or whatever. I mean, that's the, that's the problem that we run into. If we constrain too much, instead of it actually doing what, in theory, this was intended to accomplish, because Idaho is so close, and again, that's not something that Seattle or Olympia is dealing with, that's something that Spokane deals with. And if it gets all pushed over into Idaho, and it's not all getting pushed into Idaho, but you drive into Idaho, you see a ton of development that's going on over there. And that means that Idaho's going to be getting our property taxes, Idaho's going to be getting our gas taxes, Idaho's going to be getting a lot of stuff where they're not paying for our roads. We're paying for our roads, but unfortunately, Idaho is getting the, the gas tax on those in a lot of ways. And so, again, what Councilwoman Klitsky is saying is, is, is very good, but there is something that we're dealing with that Olympia is not.
Councilmember Dillon?
So what I'm hearing is you're advocating for road user charge. I'm messing with you, sorry.
Not one bit.
Hearing no more comments, Councilmember Klitsky?
Look, uh, thank you for bringing up Idaho. While it's true that North Idaho, namely the Rastram Prairie, Post Falls, has developed in a fast rate in recent years, it is untrue that they have no limitations on growth. Capacity in their local systems is beginning to run out, and those areas are suffering from the effects of unrestricted growth. Exactly those effects that the Growth Management Act was adopted to mitigate in Washington. Additionally, while North Idaho has grown significantly in recent years, more units were built in Spokane metropolitan area than in the Rastram Prairie between Coeur d'Alene and the Idaho border. Furthermore, the medium, median home price in North Idaho is much higher than in Spokane, so there is much more going on than simply land capacity when it comes to where people choose to build and move.
Thank you. No commentary, please prepare to vote. Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now go into open forum. You have two minutes to speak on a topic. Please address all your comments to the chair. No cheering, booing, or clapping. We will start with Will Quinn, Cherry Hill, and Christina Thomas. Do you want to come on down?
Hey, guys. Will Quinn, Spokane, uh, finishing up pages five and six, and, uh, if you remember, addiction. So, "The chance of an addict seeking help..."
Will, before you start, could you speak into the microphone so people can hear you?
I'm sorry. Oh, you can't hear me? My voice is pretty loud.
We can hear you, it's the people online, yeah.
Oh, the people, oh, on TV?
Yes.
Wow.
You're going to be famous, Will.
Okay, or, Betty already, or Betsy already started it, you can't do that. We got to go back, because I wasn't...
I'm going to add, I'm going to give you a couple more seconds back.
Oh, thank you, Betsy. Okay, so "The chance of an addict seeking help of their own volition is at best slim and at worst zero. Confinement is not just an answer, but the only answer." Moving to page five from a week ago. This completes, if you're paying attention, this completes a brief synopsis of my educational background. I was unable to pursue a career in counseling due to the, due to my hair length. The same hair length that got me kicked out of the house and restricted my vocational pursuits to manual labor. I instead, with a savings of 800 bucks, entered into a business of buying and restoring, selling European... selling European sports cars, retiring at the age of 40. Did you pay attention to the pervasive theme of hair length? How would one compare the effects of hair length to those real and imagined adversities attributed to skin color and sexual persuasion? The answer is you can't. I would never have been able to hold the current positions of Council President Wilkerson, Councilmember Zepone, or Navarette. I would instead have been relegated to cleaning their offices. Draw your own conclusions. Turning to the business of poverty enablement, for McCann, Smith, and Garcia, the perpetuation of poverty, homelessness, and above all, drug addiction means but one thing: money and lots of it. I have never seen a better business model. We know what's in it for them. The question is, what's in it for you? In conclusion, I would like to give a shout out to those members of the Socialist Clown Party who may or may not be in attendance. For I too am the founder and last surviving member of the self-made Multimillionaires for Capitalism Society. Oh, and by the way, I like to crosswalk.
All right. Thank you, Will.
That's it. And how about that, Betsy? Under two.
Thank you very much. Is Terry Hill in the room?
Good evening, Mr. Terry.
Christina Thomas? Christie is online.
Go ahead, Christina, you're unmuted.
My name is Christina Thomas. I'm a resident here in northwest Spokane. I have never spoken in public before, maybe in like concerts and stuff, so this is scary for me. I wanted to first state how much I appreciate your resolution to affirm the Keep Washington Working Act. Though I agree it won't specifically protect our undocumented individuals seeking green status or workers visas, this is a public statement placing a line in the sand and giving direction and leadership to the values held in our community. I have a lot of friends scared, and you did the best you could to affirm them, so thank you. In a study by Gillings and Page at Princeton University in April of 2014, it was found that national public policy sees little influence from its voters. This has left our community on both sides of the aisle feeling helpless and fearful. 10 years later, we are seeing the, this feeling manifest, and not in a way that benefits our community here in Spokane. I encourage you, my council members, as well as those in witness to this meeting, to continue to stay curious. I tell my littles at home, saying my grandfather would remind me, God gave you two ears and one mouth so you may listen twice as much as you speak. I'm sure he did not make it up, but I didn't cross-reference my grandfather or check his accuracy, but the heart is still there. It's out of mind. Listening for understanding is not the same as accepting the ideals of another, but rather an exercise in empathy. I encourage us to work to find common ground. We may come from different experiences and backgrounds which influence our beliefs, yet we all encourage our social, engage in our social contract. I'm going to restate that because I must that one up. We may come from different experiences and backgrounds which influence our beliefs, yet we all must engage in our social contract. We cannot entertain delusional and wishful thinking, which deny factual evidence in embracing misinformation and conspiracy theories.
Thank you, Christina, your time is up.
Thank you.
Rick Bowcock, and then Derek Azaro.
Yesterday, I was going to do my chalk art, but one of my musician's friends was telling me about, one of my other musician's friends, Jerome, is in the audience. He plays the drums like in front of River Park Square. And for the last couple of years, he's been being harassed. One is the homeowners association downtown. And they wrote him a letter a while back, told him that he had to cease and desist playing his music. And this is an example, I've been going through this stuff since, by 2009. They did this to me downtown, they had 231 signatures against me because they didn't like my harmonica playing. Well, you know, the thing is, is this is the, this is the First Amendment, especially in the downtown area, where it's already loud, and they're complaining about drums and the, what I was told, at that they were complaining not only about hit, but, but the kids playing on the drums. They didn't like the kids playing on the drums. And I used to set a standard for our First Amendment freedom of speech music. The mentally challenged person with a rock pounding on the sidewalk saying, "Yeah, yeah, yeah," is where we start. And it goes up from there. It doesn't have to be pleasing music, it's still a First Amendment expression. The thing is, is that when this, what's been happening to my friend out there is harassment. No police came. They basically were threatening him with lawsuits, what they're doing, if he doesn't stop playing. And then the mall comes and says that he, "Well, you can play for two hours." Spokane does not have a very strong street music scene like in other cities. You hear about people having a certain time period. We don't have that here. We have a small street music scene, and it doesn't, and so sometimes people will be out here for five or six hours playing their music. It's still the First Amendment, they don't usually go past 10 o'clock in the evening. So, I just want people to be, have this undocumented about the harassment of street music. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Azaro, and then Raul Pena.
We just heard from Klitschke that the people voted. The people voted for Prop 1.2 to protect the kids in this town. And I just testified earlier, that's not happening on, on the Yashahura. Basically, I want to talk a little bit about this money you gave them last week, this $220,000 that got approved for the cold, the cold snap. I don't know how many days this is for, but I can give you a breakdown real quick. Way Out Shelter is 25 beds, that's men only. You gave them $70,000 for 25 beds, that works out to $2,800 per bed. Catholic Charities, 134 beds for men only, $120,000, 134 beds, that's $895 per bed. Revive, 15 beds, adults, parents with children. I don't think children belong with, in a, any shelter with adults that aren't family members. You gave them $30,000, 15 beds, that's $2,000 per bed. Now, I don't know if that's for a week, a month, but if you look at that amount of money, they already get a lot of money. This is extra money on top of that. I really don't think that's really responsible. There's no, there's no supplied data from these contract providers, daily, weekly return, or returning of the, of the individuals, no data of who individuals were referred to for assistance, no data of need for funds, no expense reports, nothing. Which are applying, you're asking the COPS program, CLPS, to do 10 times that to get their money. Their sole, their sole, sole providers as well as these. But I think it's better to start thinking real strongly here. Do the children in this town matter? Are they going to be safe in this town or not? The priority should be the children in this town first, with the women. If you have shelters, it should be women only or women and children, no males and no adults in those areas that the kids aren't related to. It's too dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Raul Pena, and then Will Hughlings.
And yes, I'm from Logan. And yes, I'm here. Yeah, I'd like to ask everybody that hasn't been to my, to my neighborhood to send their minions so I can show them, because you guys got too busy doing meetings here, meetings there, kissing here, kissing there. So, why don't you send, send your minions to my neighborhood? Because I've had three council members, they had the gall to show up and listen and see what I've been fighting for. So, I asked the rest of you, send your minions to my house, and I give them a personal tour of what my neighborhood is like. Yes, the kids are afraid to walk down the street. You cry about your kid afraid of people that have guns. What about the dopers? What about the homeless people in ragtag vehicles, motorhomes, within 1,000 feet of a school? Do y'all give a shit about that?
Will Hughlings, Justin Holler, and then Sunshine Wigan, if she's in the house.
Council President, do you want to call a point of order for profanity, just to have it on the record?
Thank you. Point of profanity. Go ahead, Will.
All right. Good evening, my name is Will Hughlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I'm just going to read a part of an email that I sent you guys, since this is what you want. I mean, is that not what you guys want? You silenced the comments on social media, but, so I said, "And another thing, I don't understand why no one on the city council bothers to follow up with people like me. I speak at meetings, I send emails, and yet I never get a response." Now, that's not necessarily true. Ms. Councilwoman Klitschke responded back to me on the flags. I was expecting you, because I heard you were the one that wanted them. So, I'm not going to go into that, I don't have enough time, obviously. But I send, I send emails, and yet I never get a response. What's the point of even trying to communicate with you people? You claim to want public input, yet you turn off comments on social media and tell people to email or speak at meetings. Well, I do both and still nothing. What's even crazier, that I don't get a response from the two council members who are supposedly like me. That would be Cathcart and Bingle. I guess I'm too controversial for them, just like President Trump. Apparently, my involvement with the Spokane GOP is just too controversial, I guess. I mean, I, I am, I'm on the, the, a lot of different committees, and I speak for you guys, but I don't get no response. And I come up here, I would at least expect some follow-up, because I actually care. And I, I just find it kind of disrespectful that you guys turn off comments and you can't even respond back. And I understand you got a lot of other things to do, but you guys need to think about that.
Thank you. Yes. Please, Councilman McCott.
Yeah, I would just say, there, there was a request from Will regarding comments on social media, and we did respond back, letting him know that a legal analysis was being done, and that it was being looked at, and since then, that legal analysis has come out.
Thank you. Justin Holler, and then Sunshine.
Justin Holler, District 1. I wanted to talk on OPR 0122, 1, or 0731, 0144, but apparently that was not the time, last time, so I got snubbed on that, because you guys don't want to hear anything any of your constituents have to say. I'm concerned about all these NGOs and the money that is, is spent on them. And I'm wondering when and if any of the drug dealers are going to be caught, incarcerated, tried, and convicted? And off the street, you have multiple felons for all, all kinds of reasons.
Sorry, Justin. Earlier, when it was time, he did ask, and I would, I would make the motion to let him speak on those issues if he'd like.
Will is speaking now.
Yeah. But you're not going to speak on those ones because you think you missed your opportunity, right? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, I thought, I thought I missed my opportunity, because I, I asked specifically, we're talking about the OPRs, and I was told no.
Go ahead.
I would, okay.
Okay. Is this my personal time, or is this the other time?
This is your time.
I would, I would make a motion to extend his time a couple minutes so that he can speak on those, because he was trying to speak on them earlier, and, and there was a miscommunication.
Go ahead. Set your time at three minutes.
I'll, I'll try and keep it brief. There, there's a low-interest loan for 3.7 million. I'm wondering why public works need a, a loan for that? What are they going to do with that money? And what, more importantly, what are we getting for that money? 0, that's 1, 0122, 0731, 7, 77,665 dollars for a survey? I'll, I'll do it for you, it's completely fucked. 0144, Perry Street Sewer, didn't, didn't they already do that? And ma, ma, can, can we make sure that that's done right and not have a sinkhole next to grain shed like last time? That'd be great. And i, i, it just, it just speaks to the incompetence that Spokane Works Department apparently is, is righteous for. And I'd like to see more accountability for the money spent on the, the, on, on Perry Street for that main sewer. You know, it'd be, it'd be nice that it doesn't have a sinkhole again, like, like with green shed. Anyway, all, I, I say that all, and it's just very frustrating that it doesn't seem like you guys are good stewards with our money. And that's kind of my, my, my hammering point, is what do you do with the money you already steal? You know, you raise property taxes, you add all these fees to landlords, you, you, you make businesses spend more money on, for Narcan when they're selling accessories for, for drug use, but you don't make business owners who sell sodas and sugary drinks buy insulin for diabetics. What's the difference? If someone gets, gets gacked out on sugar, are you going to give them insulin? Are, are people going to be undiagnosed medics and treat them for, for diabetes now? But you'll, you'll, you'll make a business owner buy, buy Narcan when they're, when they're using accessories, and you're making them an accessory, basically. It's, it's tragic. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say on, on those OPRs. If you want to, I don't know if you want to add or subtract or whatever, but, here we go. This is by Tom McDonough, Clown World. "You worried about leaving a better planet for our kids? How about leaving better kids for our planet? An entire generation offended by everything, getting mad about a human that thinks all lives matter. We don't need, we don't need black or white, or left or right, we need common sense and bal, and we need balance. We all are on the same boat, you trying to make holes."
Thank you, Justin. After Sunshine will be Wendy Fishburne, and then Jerome Green.
"Not all heroes wear capes. One of the symptoms of my borderline personality disorder is rage. And Bridget Cannon from VOA stayed stern and never stopped giving me love, like breaking a wild Mustang. She broke me of my violence. She is the reason I'm not a violent adult. She taught me it's okay to love, not all people who love you hurt you. She stayed in my life for 25 years after raising me and crosswalk. I just want to take a moment, she passed away last, last week for her. She came to give you guys an update on the Hope House last time she was here. She was a huge part of my life and still was, she'll live in me forever. I have faith in this council that the love in your hearts will flourish in the things you do with loving kindness." Now, I want to speak on the, the church shelters again. It's very frustrating when you have no showers in there, like, there's cancer patients, people that are very ill, like I am, et cetera. Say you have an accident, you're stuck with no shower to clean yourself up, your bird bath in. The sanitation of it is just not humane, in my opinion. I don't know if there's, Jules is bringing her shower system in there, I'm assuming. But I just, 342,000 to provide 60 beds for six months, about 950 per bed, per month. I just, I, I feel that you guys would be better off not giving us anything and building us an actual shelter that's built right, like the Hope House where it is humane. And I know that 15 million is a lot to come up with, but that's what you guys have spent, you spent way over that on these little shelters.
Thank you, Sunshine, your time is up.
Your little forts. Your little forts.
After Wendy, Jerome Green, and then Christopher Savage. Wendy's going to come first, Jerome, and then you'll be up next. Thank you.
So things got personal last week. I asked you to separate out funding for the most complicit enablers that are destroying our streets. You separated it out, and then you passed it anyway. That night, my sweet friend Katara let us know they found her son's lifeless body overdosed on fentanyl the day after his 24th birthday. The next day, a one-year-old had to be Narcaned twice with cardiac arrest responses. Our children are dying, y'all. I tell myself that the anchor of man does not bring about the righteousness of God. Go do good deeds, Wendy. It's important. So I got permission from Katara and hosted a black balloon display in honor of those lost to overdose deaths. I want to raise awareness on our downtown streets, and I personally invited y'all to show up. You didn't have to stay. You didn't have to say anything. You couldn't be bothered with coming down the elevator to tie one black balloon and support Katara and all the families she represents. Betsy, I'm sorry. I had no nice words at the memorial. It was a powerful call to action, and I'm glad you were there. I hope to see you vote differently now. Stop funding Catholic charities and make our streets safe again. Every death from here on out is negligent manslaughter until you and our mayor declare a state of emergency on our streets. We're losing a human soul almost every day. If you're having quarterly meetings, doing human math, that's one meeting every 90 souls dead to drugs. It's time to call a state of emergency on our streets. Focus on fentanyl. Our kids are dying. Thank you, Bingo and Sheriff Knowles for showing up, our leaders. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Jerome? After Jerome, Christopher Savage.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerome Green. I'm the CEO of Magic Bus Spokane. And just to give a little history briefly, we are a Washington nonprofit corporation. We are a traveling music show that we help kids and youth with their performing arts talent for free. And we serve, actually, I serve Washington, Idaho, Montana, and I also recently was in Hollywood, California, with The Voice. And however, today is a real unpleasant situation, because I'm also speaking in behalf of kids, families, young ones who are disadvantaged, and as well as our musicians here in Spokane. I received a letter from the condominium homeowner association trying to ban our music in front of River Park Square. And I'm a former member of the legal community, and also formerly with Gray Line Tours. I'm very versed in about our constitutional law. This letter is more threatening to us, because it doesn't just affect me. It affects kids. It affects Spokane as a fun destination. And this letter here is about nuisance. And after reading the letter, which I provided for your council here, based on RCW 7.48.0110, talks about a nuisance. We are far from being a nuisance here in Spokane. And our goal is to make Spokane a fun destination. But however, the letter, the threatening letter from a law office, we want them to stop this harassment, and also harassing our street musicians here in Spokane.
And thank you, Jerome. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Christopher Savage, and then Jacob Summ?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Savage, and I live in District 3. I come to you this evening as the Community Assembly Representative for Balboa South Indian Trail Neighborhood Council to share information about last week's meeting regarding the scattered sites model that was presented at the Community Assembly. The scattered sites model presentation was a bait and switch, smoke and mirrors, however you'd like to describe, as a bad-faith conversation with a provider that should have been fully transparent with what they were doing. When asked by District 3 Community Assembly Rep about the inequable distribution of shelters in District 3, she was met with a cavalier response from Mr. Smith that stated he is proud to share the brunt of the shelters, as he also lives in District 3. This doesn't sound like a scattered sites model to me, and yet it is interesting to note how they are barely any shelters in District 2 that could match District 3's numbers. The scattered sites model is sounding more of a centralized model that is making their focus primarily in District 3. Empire Health Foundation has been given $5.3 million in funding, and this is the results we get. And not to mention, the funding for these scattered sites models will run out by June 30 of this year. Did we really get our money's worth out of this? I would say absolutely no. It is absolutely appalling how Mr. Smith wouldn't address the subversive methods of establishing a shelter without the neighborhood's awareness or consent, as we have seen in Cliff Cannon Neighborhood and East Central Neighborhood with Cat and Jules helping hands. Where is the government transparency needed? Make sure that everyone is understanding what is going on. I would like to end on a positive note and thank Council President Wilkston for attending and staying for the Community Assembly meeting. Her constant dedication to the civic organization, even when given tough questions, shows her commitment to our city. Thank you.
Jacob, and then David Billsland, and then Christine Quinn.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to transient, like everybody else, like you guys talking about homeless people out there on the streets. The first time I like talking in front of you guys.
Sir, could you talk more into the microphone so we could hear you? Thank you.
I'm very nervous right now. It's the first time I've talked to anybody about this, and it's kind of a big deal, I guess. The homeless people out there, they look down upon and stuff, and I'm one of the main ones out there that is hit in the heart the most. I've been through the Camp Hope situation. I was just here at the Camp Hope, and there's no, there was no change, no structure, which we needed in a way, but they're put there in front of us with a gate, saying it was structured. It wasn't structured. The Jules helping hands, they didn't, they're not, they never actually lived in our shoes. They weren't homeless. They didn't freeze. They didn't have friends freezing to the sidewalk. I mean, I'm going through that every day. I'm having friends that are mine, or close that are dying. They may be addicts, but they're going through a lot of pain. They're like their life traumas that happen puts them through it. The people, they're so, they need someone, something that's going to rise up with them. Somebody donated money to Camp Hope to help the homeless. That was supposed to get housing. I was supposed to be one of the persons that was badged, and I kept, I put that there. Well, I got nothing. I got, pretty much, Jules helping hands was like the last resort, and they stopped listening to anything I had to say. The homeless people, the money that was going around was just taken to them. Homeless people, I've been, I went through Catalyst, I went through all these main places that I needed to go to, to move into housing, to do what I need to get into housing. And I was put in a position where I would look like the bad person, and I'm not a bad person. And I may have, I just try to speak my opinion most of the time. Every day, I'm worried about going to jail, and I shouldn't have to worry about going to jail when I'm doing honestly everything I can to do honest. And I have a tent. Yeah, I live on the street, because I have nothing else right now to move up to. But I put myself in this position, because I'm not a homeless person. I'm looking to change people and change, kind of change the way that people look at, people have to show, people have to care. Give everybody the reason to care again. Because we lost, the homeless people out there, we don't care. We need to learn how to care again, so you guys can all care for each other. Because, you know, this may just all fall down, because we learned that we forgot what love was. We were broken.
Thank you, Jacob. Your time is up. Thank you. Dave?
Good evening. Dave Billsland from Logan. I got to ask, you called me David. Does that mean I'm in trouble already?
Yes.
I generally go by Dave. I want to remind everybody out there that there's going to be motorcycles, and bicycles, and scooters all over the place. Let's keep them in our eyes. Let's watch out for them. I've had a couple of times where I've been run off the road by, pardon my French, a damn cage. I didn't like it. Fortunately, I wasn't hurt. So watch out for the people on motorcycles. Watch out for the people on bicycles. Watch out for the people on scooters, especially the scooters. Pedestrians have to watch out for scooters, too. So let's watch out for all those two-wheeled vehicles, because they are out there. From the standpoint of a motorcyclist, you guys are out to get me, and I know it. Because that's the way a lot of people drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Quinn. Thank you, David.
Before I start, I'd like to say there is a two-year-old overdosing in Airway Heights right now, which we see two Narcans.
I stand to honor the memory of Gabriel Fencer, a young man with extraordinary talent and limitless potential. Another life stolen by fentanyl. Another family shattered, and it didn't have to happen. But hear me now, a seed has been planted, a movement is rising, and it will not be stopped. This community will no longer look away. We will not be silent. Change is coming in the name of Gabriel. Not too long ago, I had two 12-year-olds in my car, and I said to them, "Hey, what do you know about fentanyl?" And they'd heard the word, no idea it was a drug, no idea what it was. And how was that possible? I took them last Thursday to the Safe Youth Summit. It made a huge impact on these 12-year-olds, especially when they heard from Sarah Knowles. She shared how she came from a stable, loving home, had everything, but was introduced to fentanyl by her older boyfriend. So I'm deeply grateful to her. They saw themselves in her story. And I also learned from Ann Raven, head of Medical Services for Spokane Fire Department and the CARES manager, they are responding to overdose calls at middle schools. Middle school kids are being Narcaned. Let that sink in. Middle schoolers. Driving the sixth graders home, I learned from one of the sixth graders that at Chase Middle School, there are several sixth graders selling pot called plugs. This is the reality we are facing. Our kids are overdosing. Our first responders are being called to schools to bring them back to life.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. Thank you for attending. Our next meeting will be at our town hall at 6:00 PM at the Northeast Community Center. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those who favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Who's doing the recap?